Okay, call to order the city council meeting, seven o'clock. And we've already done pledges allegiance? No, that's up. Okay, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a presentation from Santa Cruz County Youth Violence Prevention Task Force. This is an update. Hi. Good evening.
This was on. There it is.
Hello.
Yeah, hello. Yep.
For any of you that don't know me, I need you to go into Sarah Ryan, sorry, Capitol Police Department. I appreciate being invited back around to come full circle for the Youth Violence Prevention Network Dialogue Circle. So, to just give a really quick recap, back in the fall of 2018, I, myself, with, to represent Capitol Police Department as well as other law enforcement agencies and community members, came together as steering committee to discuss bringing youth, community members, and law enforcement all together to have dialogue circles in order to just better understand each other and move forward and find out what needs were being met and what needs we might need to improve on. So then, in moving forward, so that was the fall of 2018, and then in the spring of 2019, every law enforcement agency in this county brought officers to the table as well as community members. And then we also went out and reached out to our respective communities and found youth to participate in dialogue circles. We, they had trained facilitators. We did six weeks of circles. It was pretty impressive. It's not easy to have, keep youth engaged, week after week after week. And circles were held in those places, Live Oak, Santa Cruz, Capitola, and then Watsonville had a huge, sort of, you know, supply and demand, they had a huge demand, and so they had two circles that took place. After the circles, we came together in the late spring as a group. The, the task force itself, the people that, us, those of us that were selected to help guide the project, the participants, and the youth, the law enforcement participants, the community member participants, and then some. Some of, like Mr. Ari were there, came to the table, and we all came and talked about, collectively as a group, what some of the findings were. And it was a very dynamic and diverse group. We split off into a lot of subgroups in order to identify what some of the key points were. And those three points up there was what basically rose to the surface as things to focus on as we move forward. And that was just based on all of the information that was extracted from everyone that participated. So the increase in educational opportunities and information sharing. And what that means is educational opportunities between law enforcement and the community, sharing information about what, learning about what's going on in the community, and the community learning about what is happening with law enforcement. Three events and activities, so ways to bring us together that the, both law enforcement and community agreed that we needed to find ways to continue to bring us together. And shifts in policies and practices around policing. The communities had a real interest in our policies and our procedures and what we were doing to essentially keep up with the times and with what's happening in our respective communities. We had a lot of support. Without, these are just some of the groups that helped to, you know, financially support the events, donating space to have these dialogue circles for, for some of the groups childcare needed to happen. And then food, food brings people together, so, you know, and feeding the youth that were coming and spending time with all of us to do this work. So, what I'd like to just say before I see if there's any questions for me about it, just in terms of how it was affected with Capitola, one of the takeaways for me is, I'm really, was really proud to see that we actually worked really well with our community, that we seem to flow well and support the community, the community supports law enforcement. Other folks are having different struggles. And so it's, I'm glad that we're all coming together and talking about it. Our county is, really, is actually pretty small. So, but it was really, I was really proud to see that, you know, that we're moving in the direction that we are. And from here, we're now in the place where we're discussing how to take those three main goals and launch them forward. And in that kind of brainstorming phase and looking at realistically, what do we have the funding for? You know, what's going to work? And who are all of our participants?
Great. Any questions? Sam, yes?
Thank you, Sergeant Ryan. My question was, one of the topic ideas was about shifts in policies and practices for the police force. And I just wondered what some of those changes were brought up and discussed and that you may be bringing back for our consideration.
So, I actually moved that third one back to the first one, which was increase in educational opportunities and information sharing. A lot of what, we only had a certain amount of time at that last meeting, and there was a lot of people there. And a lot of the community members don't actually know how our training has progressed over the years. So, the, I'm, let me know when I answer your question right. But they wanted to know how our policies and procedures and our training has shifted. And so I basically looped those together, and that's one of the things I brought back as we came to meet in this second phase. Because a lot of that can be covered in us sharing. People don't know how we've changed to doing a lot of intensive training about mental health issues, recognizing what that looks like, de-escalation training. Those are things that maybe didn't happen a decade ago, but they're happening now, and the public just isn't aware.
Sure. Okay, great, thank you.
I just have a comment, I have a question.
What's that noise?
It's the maintenance.
Oh, is that what it is? I was like, what is that noise?
Oh, right. I was wondering why you did that.
Well, thank you for being here. I was at the last meeting where I got to listen to the outcomes, and I was really excited, exciting to hear the group so excited or themselves about the implementation of these steps. One thing that came up, you, or like you mentioned, is that there is a lot of, everyone's really happy with our police force here in Capitola. You do a tremendous job. One thing I'd like to learn more about is what sort of tools are you using to train staff in dealing with the folks that don't live here? We're a tourist community, many people come to visit us. And so you mentioned the mental health training or the de-escalation. So if anything comes up, or if you do any other trainings, that's just something that I could use as a resource when talking to community members about what you all do. Yeah.
I just have a comment, that's somebody's question. I just, Sarah, I just want to thank you for what you do. I think anything we do to encourage and continue dialogue is fabulous. It's very difficult these days, it's challenging. So the fact that you're making that bridge, I think this is a fabulous program. Thanks for your efforts.
So I was there too, and I was very impressed with the, I guess, the power of the group discussions. There must have been an immense amount of commitment because these went over, I forgot how many weeks, but it was for a long period of time, and the reports out, I think, were pretty good. So this technique, I think, is viable. Is there any plans to continue it and use it on a regular basis as people become more involved in trying to work on youth violence issues?
There is, there is talk about continuing with the circles. There's also some talk about how to restructure the facilitators. Because that is really key in driving a conversation that is productive and healthy. Because the idea isn't to, you know, focus on some of the perceived negatives of law enforcement versus the community. The idea is to bring it together. So that's really one of the things we're working on right now, is how to have really skilled facilitators that can extract useful information and then, you know, we can move forward with it.
I understand you work a lot with New Brighton. Is there any possibility that this could be used in New Brighton and get some ideas from that student body?
Absolutely. In fact, we did that when we started at the very beginning. I personally went to New Brighton and I, you know, for years of policing and parenting, I'm familiar with the staff there.
Right.
So we together worked on selecting some kids and finding out what they thought they needed for them to go to that school. Is that's all right?
Right. Okay. Well, since it's just a report and an update, thank you very much, and appreciate your efforts, definitely. Thank you. Okay, report on closed session.
The city council reviewed both items on the agenda and no action was taken.
Thank you. Any additional materials?
We have none.
Okay. So additions and deletions to the agenda?
Staff has no changes.
Okay. Now is the time for public comments. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak? You have three minutes for any item not on the agenda. And if you'd like to state your name for the record, you may, you don't have to.
I'm Shari McQuaid, and I'm very thankful that the loan dire properties have opened for input. We're considering our comments regarding the Capitola mall renovation project. The facts are clear. Residential use in the size is not profitable for California, Capitola. By removing dwellings from the proposal, many of the controversies, contingencies, and complications disappeared. For Capitola's zoning laws regarding building plans, curb stepgates should be respected and remain unchanged. Zentrines want to build the mall for a shopping experience and perhaps get something to eat. They're probably not going to the mall to pop in and pick up for a cleaning. Here are details on how to implement that concept. In vision of pedestrian, only enclosed mall providing a handle for shopping, dining, and eating. In the shape of a grand cross, two-way people movers, like the conveyors at an airport, allow for customers to travel through to reach the four main branches with ease. Wide, serpentine paths, lengthened conveyors where people can each explore, window shop, and decide where to eat. The central core of the mall is a huge covered pavilion with plenty of seating, perhaps a cafe. In addition to the four main mall entrances, each store has its own street entrance and an entrance inside the mall. A generous amount of colorful plants and trees lend interest in dramatic lighting creates a relaxing ambience. The color palette consists of soothing sand, driftwood, and many colors of the sea along the sea glassed water. Many comfortable seating options throughout the mall offer places to meet, regroup, sit down and rest. Wherever feasible, restaurants can provide diners with indoor seating, outdoor covered seating for visiting rainy giants, and outdoor uncovered seating. Animating from the center of the mall are four branches, each having its own identity. The kids' center theme with stores, activities, along with childcare facilities. Another ring is surfing through the ages theme with clothing, housewares, gift core, restaurants, bars. A third ring with incredible food court, places for teenagers to hang out, take selfies, charge phones, ping pong, bocce ball, cornhole, DJ gas lights. A final ring features travel shop, art galleries, wine bars, brandy and scotch library, cigar lounge, and luxury food, all leading up to the lush Venetian winter training inspired hotel and spa. The hotel has a restaurant with breakfast, lunch, and dinner so good even the locals want to go there. Bicycle routes make sense and are clearly marked, and there are convenient bike racks at each main mall entrance. Parking lot spaces are covered with solar panels instead of additional trees. A pet release station, a dog park area by the metro center perhaps with a cafe. The Capitola Community Development Department mission statement includes preserving Capitola's unique cultural and historic character. We could do this with proper brandy, such as the likeness of the Capitola mall entrance site used throughout the property. I'm Shari McQuaid, and I endorse this message. Thank you.
Thank you, Shari. Okay, anyone else? Okay, bring you back to city council for comments? Let's take a deep breath, this is scary.
Spire.
Okay.
Is this city council comments? I'm sorry.
Yeah, city council comments right now.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to, in light of the holiday, the, on Thursday, I just want to take a moment to thank all the staff that come out on rainy days and show up to all these meetings. I really appreciate all of you, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Okay, you have comments?
Well, and I also wanted to wish everyone out there viewing within hearing range, happy holidays. May you spend it with those you love and be in good health. So happy Thanksgiving.
Okay. One other comment, this is for our finance director. I'd like to add an item for the fact to, to, I guess, look into, and that is transfer tax. And I won't be on the fact next year, so I want to bring that up right now. Also, this meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications TV, Channel Eight. And it's also being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. And on Saturday, the following, first rebroadcast on one, again, on Charter, Chapter Seventy-One, Channel Seventy-One, and Comcast Top Twenty-Five. We also record it, if you go to our website. And that's it for me. Any city staff comments?
I don't think staff has any comments this evening. Larry, are you getting up to make one? No. We're closely monitoring the creek. That's the news of the day right now, to see when we might open. We're hoping we're going to get it open in the next three days. I don't think tonight's going to happen, but I probably just jinxed it.
Okay. City clerk? Oh, Ed.
Steve, I hate to make you get up, but I see these new pads being poured in the village. Are we expanding the pay stations or what's going on there? Thanks.
We're coming to that point where we're trying to get rid of all the singles?
Shift around pay stations. And the clean Thanksgiving. Important pass now.
I saw. Oh, great, thank you.
And I think tonight's going to be the next big break in 2019, and there's a big weather ban coming.
Will that break through?
Okay. Okay. That's good. Okay. Okay, let's go on to regular agenda items, consent calendar. Anyone on the council who would like to pull an item? Okay, seeing none, anyone in the audience who would like to pull an item? Seeing none, is there a motion? I'll move consent.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So passes, thank you. Let's go on to general government and public hearings, special event highlights, item A, nine A.
Good evening, Mayor Patron, council members and staff. First item for you this evening is our annual special events highlight for 2019. I want to invite Captain Andy Daly after just a second to make that presentation to council. But I want to take a moment on behalf of the police department, myself as chief, just to thank the community. Each year at this time, we talk a lot about special event fatigue, Nick Rolfe reminded me of terminology, which happens right around October or November each year with all the special events. And the community is very supportive, they attend to these events, and some they don't. And we know that many people from outside do attend all of our special events. So I want to recognize the community for their patience and their willingness to work with us. Especially this year, because as you go along all year long, we had a lot of traffic, construction going on, we had sewage project going on above the world affecting the village throughout the entire special event season. So I thought it was important this evening that I come up here speaking to yourselves and to anyone who might be viewing, thanking them for their patience and their support of the police department as we work through all of these special events. And so, thank you very much to everybody. And I'll invite Captain Daly up to actually make a presentation of the special events I noticed. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Patron, council members and staff. I'm here this evening to provide my report of the 2019 special events. This, my goal this evening is to highlight this year's events, answer any questions, and read perceived direction from council for the coming year. For 2019, we had ten general events and thirty-six minor events. General events require council approval, and minor events are approved by the city manager. The difference between general and minor events are the projected attendees and the impact on city services. Typically, any event with more than two hundred attendees are considered general events. For this year, no new general events were added, and three minor events were added. And those included three Capitola Village special events, the Skate Tola, and a Monterey Park three truck stand. Some of the historical general events include the Capital Public Safety Car Show, the Warf, the Warf Race, Art and Wine Festival, and the Mondo Fireworks. This year was the Second Annual Beach Festival, which replaced the Regatta Festival. Also this year, the Jade Race was canceled by the event organizers, which was a general event. The most notable change for this year was the addition of security courts that was funded by the organization. The police department staff met with the event organizers and prepared a safety plan, including the use of security personnel at the traffic control points and road curvings. This allowed for better allocation of city staff, particularly those with police officers. Staff provided our approach by pre-establishing incident command structure, commonly referred to as the ICS. And a police department assigned a supervisor or sergeant to act as the incident commander for each jail. By doing so, this pre-establishing ICS structure allowed for city resources to complement and not compete for one. After actual reports were prepared upon each general event, and no major issues were raised. On average, during a general event where we did significant towing, it was about four vehicles per general event. The highest amount of vehicles towed was from the Warf to Warf, and that was ten units. Only a few calls for service were noted during all the events, and I'm happy to announce that we made actually no arrests specifically linked to the general events. The city billed a total of three hundred and forty hours, which included, which was two hundred and fifty hours of police personnel and ninety hours of public workers. This represented an increase of seventeen percent, seventeen percent, and all the costs were reimbursed by the event organizers. So in summary, this was a very successful year, and I'm happy to answer any specific questions.
Sergeant Daly, Captain Daly, I'm sorry. The new events, the sip and stroll, has there been any problems with those? Or has that been something that's just seems to blend right in?
No, no significant problems over at Capitola. They're dealt with as a minor event, so they're not general events. There's no significant road closures. As I said, the DIA was the one that brought this forward. It's been a trend. I know that they have them in Soquel Village and in Capitola Village, like I said, they have three this year. But there wasn't a significant impact. There was just more so bridging the gap between the seasons, so they'll add in the kind of the falls, winters, and then spring.
Great, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor. And, you know, I've heard very little complaints from residents about the events, even though we have many events. And I think a lot of them make what Capitola, what it is. Some of them, the complaints I do hear are generally around amplified sound early in the morning. And particularly with certain music that is played and amplified very early in the morning. I guess some people don't like heavy metal at eight a.m., if that occurs. But do we have some ability or in our permits to indicate that they're not to play really loud amplified sounds early in the morning? Or maybe if they do have music? Because I understand, yeah, music helps get people going, and especially on the runs and things. But maybe something that's not as alarming for the locals here that maybe are trying to sleep nearby?
Absolutely. So we do have controls as far as putting these parameters on what we can, what we want with special events. I know that we made that shift with, I believe it was one of the triathlon's where they played music, and they had the speakers actually facing towards the escalon. And so the adjustment was that we said, no, you know, turn them out, and then we put a time restriction on it. So that's absolutely.
Right, good, good. Yeah, yeah. And I mean, I think that aside from that, it seems like most people who live here and as well that are attending, they really enjoy the events. I think it's healthy for the community. And thank you, Captain Daly, for, you know, being a part of making all these events very successful. And particularly the Skate Tola. I want to give a thumbs up for that and hope to see that again.
We're going to put it on the calendar for this year.
Wonderful, good.
Thank you. No questions for me. Appreciate it. Okay, so let's move on to item B, Senate Bill Two, Housing Grant Resolution.
Good evening, Mayor Patron and council members. Before you tonight is an exciting opportunity for the city of Capitola. The SB Two housing grants are currently open for applications. And this came about in 2017 as part of the Fifteen Bill Housing Package for the housing crisis. Within SB Two, there was an established fee that was connected to real estate transactions of seventy-five dollars. And those funds have been adding up, and for the first year of establishing the grants, half of that money is going towards municipalities so that they can help accelerate and facilitate housing projects within cities. So the city of Capitola, due to our size, we can get up to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a housing grant. The criteria is that our plan must include either a plan or a process that will actually accelerate housing production. And that can be done through different means of timing and cost, feasibility, increasing your infrastructure capacity for more housing, and any impacts on housing supply and affordability. Within the grant application, there are six items which would, are almost automatic approvals that they identify. And those include rezone to permit by right. That's something we're doing regardless of the grant money. We'll be updating our zoning code for ADUs to reflect the new standards. Three new laws were passed this past legislative session, and those will go into effect January first. And I've been working closely with Sam on updating our ordinance. So we'll be bringing that back in early January. Of this list, the two items that I would suggest that the city of Capitola apply for are, one, creating objective design and development standards to be consistent with SB Thirty-Five, and I have a few slides on that. And also utilizing the money for accessory dwelling units. With the new laws that are in place, dwelling ADUs can be approved administratively. The guidance is very prescriptive in the new laws. And I was thinking we could utilize this money to create our own, I'll go to the next slide. We could streamline ADU production through pre-approved site and architectural plans. So we could actually put out a bid for local designers, architects. And we can, with the money, with a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we could probably get four architects in order to create four different standards. We could look at our standard lot sizes and what would fit within a rear yard and create pre-approved site and architectural plans. And then also developing informational materials for the public, so really enhancing our public outreach in terms of our website and making the process really easy in terms of getting the word out there on how easy it's become over time. The more technical part of this is the SB Thirty-Five. So this SB Thirty-Five was also part of the Fifteen, the 2017 package for the housing updates. And what SB Thirty-Five does is it streamlines housing development for mixed use as well as multi-unit and mixed use developments, as long as the mixed use development has at least two-thirds housing. All applications must be approved ministerially, meaning they cannot go before a public hearing. And they must be processed within sixty to a hundred and eighty days. In reviewing an SB Thirty-Five application, the city is only allowed to apply objective design standards. And I'll get into that a little bit more, but this is what that, the money would be utilized for is to update our zoning code to make sure we have objective design standards. And SB Thirty-Five is applicable to any city that has not met their RENA allocation numbers, their regional housing need allocation numbers. So this slide shows you what we have for our RENA numbers in Capitola. The first column is the goals. The second column is the number of units. The first column is the goals, the second column is the number of units developed. As you can see, we have one moderate unit that's at that Thirty-Eighth Avenue complex. We would have had the number, we would have had three here if Claire's Street had been developed, the two density bonus applications. But that, they withdrew their applications, so. Out of our sixty above moderate, this is just your typical housing, not de-restricted, we're up to forty-nine. So we're eleven units away from meeting our above moderate numbers. So hoping to see a lot of improvement in our numbers with the mall redevelopment project. I think we've got a real opportunity there to get our numbers up. But interesting, within SB thirty-five, if you haven't met your above moderate numbers, there's a requirement that the applicant only bring in ten percent of the project that would have to be affordable. If you've met your above moderate number, so if we were at the sixty, then the requirement would be that any develop, any developer under SB thirty-five would need to bring in thirty, fifty percent of the units as affordable units. So you probably are less likely to see an SB thirty-five application once we've met our above moderate. Or we'd get a great project with a whole lot of affordable, affordable housing in it. So eligible products under SB thirty-five, the criteria is that they must meet their urban infill. So three, three sides of the property must have already been developed. There must be at least two units within the development. Again, we have to have, they can only be reviewed under Objective Zoning Subdivision and Design Review Standards. They're not applicable in the coastal zones, so two-thirds of our city would not, this wouldn't apply to. But it would be applicable out on Forty-first Avenue, north of Capitola Road. And what, where SB thirty-five cannot take place is in an area that already has rent restrictions and price controls if the housing has been occupied by tenants within the past ten years and within historic structures. So that also doesn't leave many opportunities, but our mall site would be subject to this as well as a future mixed use site within our regional commercial zone and, and community commercial. And the other part is that within SB thirty-five, they must pay prevailing wages, so another hurdle for developers. So objective design standards are standards that involve no personal or subjective judgment by a public official and are available to the public. An example of that, many of our guidelines are kind of similar to the guidelines on the left, on the left that talks about articulation to reduce the apparent massing of a building and to be sensitive or compatible with the neighborhood. We've got a lot of that in our code. An example of an objective design standard is, it sets parameters that anyone could read and know exactly what's expected. So for every a hundred feet of building length, there shall be a plane break along the facade comprised of an offset of at least five feet in depth by twenty-five feet in length. The offset shall extend to grade to the highest story. Now, you also see many like standards for how much window openings have to be along a facade and differences for commercial versus residential. So that's what would change, we'd be going through our standards. And in the design standards that are kind of fluffy, like the one on the left, we'd be making them more prescriptive, like the example on the right. So the recommended action tonight is to consider the resolution approving Senate Bill Two Planning Grant Application for the current grant cycle. And that would include public outreach and pre-approved site and architectural plans for accessory dwelling units and objective design standards consistent with SB thirty-five. One other thing I meant to mention on this, for the ADUs, we would take those, the design to the, not just to show exactly what the building would look like, but actually to the point that they could be submitted for building plans. So really taking that extra cost away from the applicant. They wouldn't just have what the design's gonna look like and what the site layout is, but it'll actually be able to be, other than them putting it on their site plan so it fits, it should be approvable, so at the level of building permit submittal. With that, I've, any questions?
Questions? Sam?
The pre-approved plans, would those be optional?
Yes.
Okay, would they come in different colors?
Yes, so, and we wouldn't regulate color, they could choose their own colors. But I, I was imagining that we could have a couple different styles from different architects that people could choose. And they could probably change out at their expense, you know, what the finish materials are if they prefer a different finish.
I do have a question. A lot of discussion about the cost for permits. Is there any issue here that's going to be provided for? They try to, you know, this is really, for ADUs, for instance, no, since we want to encourage ADUs to, you know, assume the cost of permits, that kind of thing. Can this grant cover that, the cost of the permits?
Part of the grant can look at how to reduce your costs regarding permits. We've done that through, our, our permit is just administrative. And, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact figure on hand for the, our permit right now. But the, but it does cost when you come in for a building permit to go through the building permit review.
But that would be the intent behind this, is we'd be able to short-circuit a lot of our costs. At the end of the day, though, yeah, I mean, the key is, is not going to hearing is a huge cost savings. And that's probably the largest piece that people would save. But the largest cost that anyone's gonna pay with an ADU is not on our part, but is on the water district's part. And that's something we don't have control over.
Got it, okay.
Some cities have impact fees that are assessed on ADUs, and those can be three to ten thousand dollars. Cities after the new legislation are reducing them or even waiving them, but you don't have those. And so it's actually less expensive to build an ADU in Capitol than it is in a lot of communities already.
Okay, so I guess I didn't phrase it too well. You did explain this is gonna reduce the cost because of design and such like that, plug and play almost in a sense. But if we're gonna encourage ADUs, if, if this grant can include provisions to actually reduce it to zero, you know, or maybe a water permit, you know, we have to pay for the water permit, that kind of thing.
Okay, so the grant will not cover those types of costs. I actually reached out and talked to a representative today, and it really has to be something that you're strategizing to improve in your process. Or another way in which to do this would be to, there, there was one section that talked about form-based codes and SEQA processes in which, in which you would go into a specific area of your town. Say if we did this around, we'll just say Gales, we could create a specific, like re, almost like a redevelopment area, but a form-based code that would prescribe exactly what could be built in that area. And then we would pass, get approved the SEQA documents tied to that development. And therefore, they would have an administrative process of review for redevelopment of that area. And that saves money on a plan. So it either has to be a process or a plan, but it cannot be to diminish the costs of, like, to, to take our costs of what it takes for us to review the application, so.
It, it's really for cities, it's, it's money for cities to use to incentivize development essentially by individuals. It's not necessarily for individuals to reduce their costs. The impacts of the city and reworking its own procedures will reduce the developer's costs. But the grant isn't necessarily for individuals to offset their costs.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have, I have a question.
You do?
Should we get this, this grant and you, we move forward with creating those plans with the four, four, was it three or four? Plans for the, the houses or the ADUs, where would we have to update, or like, is it gonna be a requirement for folks to apply for the ADU? And if so, where would we include that language and would that come back to council for approval?
So our ADU ordinance will be updated come this January. The past two year, we've, we've been updating our ADU and ordinance regularly because there's been so many changes at the state level. So there could be an impact there, like the new code, the new law says there's gotta be a four-foot setback from the side and rear lot lines. If that were to change, hopefully it wouldn't impact these AD, you know, the pre-approved ADUs. The one thing that would have to change over time is within, if, if they're ready to go under and meet the building code, every three years, our building code is updated. So that's something that in three years, we'll probably want to make sure we have some type of funding that we could update these ADUs to meet building code. And we could probably work with our building official on that to make that happen and.
And just for clarification, there's an opt-out option for folks, or do they have to use one of those?
Oh, no, so they wouldn't have to use one of these. They could have their own designer, build their own ADU that is special to them, and this is just an add-on option, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone in the audience like a question? No, seeing none, is there a motion here?
I move we approve the resolution.
Second.
Second, so it's been approved in seconds? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so let's move on to item C. You're up again, I guess.
Another fun one.
Yeah.
Sorry, no zoning code tonight. Yeah, new year. Okay, um, next we're gonna discuss the sidewalk vending ordinance. I brought this to you this July, actually, and, and we talked about what type of vending ordinance would be appropriate for the city of Capitola. And the direction I was given is to just ensure the protection of public safety within the new zoning ordinance. So we've taken your, your comments and I'll present to you the highlights of our new regulations for sidewalk vending. So our current sidewalk vending ordinance is out of date. It talks about aesthetics, orderly movement of pedestrians, competition with local merchants, and it prohibits vendors within the central village. It's not in compliance with SB nine forty-six, the statewide regulations for sidewalk vending. So what can be protected under SB, under these regulations is public health, safety, and welfare. And then within our parks, we can also protect the public use and enjoyment of natural resources and recreational opportunities and make sure that the commercial activities do not interfere with the enjoyment of the park scenic and natural character. The regulations only apply to sidewalks, pathways, and parks. So if you see a sidewalk vendor and they're not located in a sidewalk, pathway, or park, then they're not allowed to be there. So good example, I think we've probably all driven by our railroad right-of-way and there's been a flower vendor out there. And once we have this passed, we'll be moving forward and, you know, but in that scenario, because she hasn't been on a sidewalk, she's got her good, her wares located throughout someone else's private property, it's an illegal activity. Under the new code, she'd have to be holding her wares and located on a sidewalk.
Yeah, ask a question about that, yeah, because I've, I've noticed her and lovely flowers, by the way. But that's RTC property. Do we, would we be enforcing their rights or to not, you know, not allow her to engage in that? Or anyone that's on the corridor?
So that technically, I believe, is, is a, like, it's, it's, I think it's open space in our zoning map, I think it's green area. So it, you can't have a business operating in that space anyway, it's not in a commercial. And if you're in a commercial zone, you have to be in enclosed building unless you have a special CUP for outdoor display of goods. So she's in conflict with the zoning code and she'd be in conflict because she's not on a sidewalk.
Okay.
Um, so within the new sidewalk vending ordinance, we set minimum sidewalk width to ensure compliance with ADA of four feet citywide. And then within the Capitola Central Village, the minimum would be ten feet. And this is due to the high pedestrian activity in the village. There are areas within the village that are wider than ten feet. So there would be opportunity. The minimum setbacks, we've set setbacks for safety standards such that from fire hydrants, crosswalks, driveways, alleys, entrances into parking areas, trash receptacles, bike racks, benches, and bus stops. There's also a hundred feet from another sidewalk vendor or an emergency personnel. So if emergency personnel was out, there'd have to be a hundred-foot setback from any incident that was occurring and a hundred feet from another sidewalk vendor. And then two hundred feet from the police station, fire station, the Capitola Beach, farmer's markets, swap meets, special events, and, and the school. I did reach out to the New Brighton School and they were happy with the two hundred-foot setback from the school. Within a city-owned park, the city is not allowed to prohibit roaming vendors from operating within a city-owned park. But we can prohibit a stationary vendor if there's an exclusive agreement with a concessionaire. Currently, we don't have any exclusive agreements with concessionaires. We have the one surf shop that's allowed to sell out of Esplanade Park, but that's not considered an exclusive agreement with a concessionaire. That, that was, we received a conditional use permit for that use and it's ongoing. We're also allowed to protect the public's use and enjoyment of our natural resources and recreational opportunities. So for this, we've set a two hundred-foot setback from the Capitola Beach. And also we prohibit the sa, sidewalk vending on our pathways that are within close proximity of our natural resources. So the enjoyment of walking down SoCal Creek Pathway, Prospector Path, Depot Hill, Grand Avenue Pathway, and we included Lawn Way as well. You really have a experience there of being close to nature and you shouldn't be approached by someone selling flowers that might ruin your experience or selling anything. So therefore, we've set buffers. In our residential neighborhoods, we can treat residential a little bit differently than commercial. So in residential, we've prohibited stationary sidewalk vendors. And also hours of operation can be different between commercial and residential areas. So commercial, you have to follow what the other businesses, you can't be more restrictive than the other businesses in the commercial area. But within the residential, we can be more restrictive. So within the proposed code, we said nine AM to six PM. Limit on the number of vendors is not allowed. It really has to be related back to s, um, health and safety standards, so we're not allowed to put a, a cap on the number of vendors. And then the types of permits that may be required, we can require a vending license, we can also require a business license. We're not allowed to ask for an outdoor, um, an approval from a non-governmental entity. So I think in some places, they would require maybe an approval from like the BIA or something like that for selling within an area. And that, that would not be allowed under state code. And also if they're selling food, we can require the health and safety permit. Also spes, specified in the state law is that cities cannot require a sidewalk vendor to obtain permission from any business to operate near them due to conflict of business uses. So that summarizes the new sidewalk vending ordinance. Our recommended action is to approve the first reading of the ordinance, to amend Chapter twelve point six four and allow sidewalk vending consistent with Senate Bill nine forty-six. And I'm available for questions.
Any questions of Katie? Sam?
Thank you, Katie. Let's see, I had a, a couple of questions, and one I was wondering, I saw the definitions of a push cart or pedal-driven, that's the definition of a sidewalk, a vendor. Do we have the ability to, or would that include power-assisted push carts or power-assisted conveyances?
I believe we removed the ability to have power assist so that it would not include power assisted.
Yeah, I wasn't, and I was, I mean, in reading through this and I just wasn't quite sure, you know, where that kind of, that came into play or whether in our other existing ordinances, we, we have the ability to, to deny a permit or, or stop somebody from using a power-assisted vendor card?
Yeah, so sidewalk vendor is defined as a person who sells food or merchandise from a push cart stand, display, pedal-driven cart, wagon, showcase rack, or other non-motorized conveyance, or from one's person upon a public sidewalk. So where it says, uh, non-motorized, we could, we plan to regulate that they cannot be reg, uh, motorized via, like, or pedal assist.
Based on that definition?
Based on that definition.
Okay, um, and let's see, my other question was concerning the ordinance itself on page uh, Agenda Packinon eighty-seven, four point six, sixty-four point uh, oh-three-oh, permit required.
Mm-hmm.
Under B, it says an individual, th- no more than one sidewalk vending permit should be issued to an individual sidewalk vendor. Um, if somebody came in and says, hey, I'm an L L C. of vending um, push carts, um, do that, does that allow them to have more than one permit? Or how would that be?
You know, we may wanna restate that, that it says, so it says no more than one sidewalk vending permit shall be issued to an individual sidewalk vendor. We may wanna say uh, to, shall be issued per business?
Individual or entity or legal entity, I mean, that, yeah, I mean, I, if that's the intent of, it's kinda like one principal gets one permit regardless of their form of business, then maybe we should spell that out, so.
That's a great catch.
And those were, thank you.
So, I, I, this kinda breaks down into two, you've got the ro- either a roaming individual or a stationary, and the stationary seems more tangible to understand. Uh, I, where I'm confused is on this roaming, and, and pretty much the way I read it is, if you're roaming, you know, if you have a cart around your neck, and you have whatever you have in your cart, and you're roaming, you pretty much can sell anywhere?
Between, between nine and six A M.
Get out of the village, out of the village. Between nine.
Nine, nine A M. and six P M., you can roam.
Especially on Forty-first Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I, I know there's some restrictions in here in the village, and the pathways, and the beach, and so that, but, but on Forty-first Avenue, if somebody had a roaming cart, and they were walking up and down Forty-first Avenue, they could almost sell anything out of that cart?
They can, but they have to keep moving.
And if they were ca- carrying, selling items that we normally restrict to just a certain amount of vendors, they would be exempt from that?
No, so um, they wouldn't be exempt from, say, selling cannabis as a roaming vendor, 'cause that, that's explicitly called out in here of, of types of permits that we only limit a, a certain number. They, um, and they have to comply with other sections of code, so, um. So goods that would not be allowed to be sold elsewhere, would not be allowed to be sold by the uh, sidewalk vendors.
Okay, that, that encompasses it, that, that, the, the wording there would, would prohibit that.
Yeah.
Just seems like there's a lot of leeway with a roaming vendor.
Yeah. We, we can double-check that language, I'm just looking for where we.
Is, is that language that we can add on to, or is this language pretty much dictated by the state?
No, we can add on to it, so I'm just looking for that section where we list.
Is this explicit to cannabis sales?
Yes.
Well cannabis sales, to sell in the city, you need to have a, a cannabis license that's issued by the city, and we have two of them, so.
I, I'm just, I, I'm trying to en- embrace this roaming, because it just, it, it just caused me concern, and, and if, if, if it's, if there's policies to protect us from that, then that's all I need to hear.
Yeah, uh, I, I know it's in here, so prohibited activities? So under oh-seven-oh, A four, it prohibits selling of alcohol, cannabis, sexually-oriented materials, tobacco products, products that contain nicotine or cannabis, or any other product used to smoke, vape, nicotine, or cannabis. But we, we could add to this, something to the effect of, and any other materials not.
This, when it says sidewalk vendor, that doesn't mean stationary, that, that applies to both roaming and stationary, the fact that it's.
Yeah. Yep, 'cause that's both.
Okay, that encompasses both, okay, make sure we're cl- covered on that, thank you.
Yep.
We have two changes or additions, okay, any other questions?
I have a few questions, um, just the flower vendor in front of Wells Fargo. So I heard that person had a little trouble, um, how's that gonna be dealt with? Is this fine with him staying at that corner? And his flowers were on a feature, I think, of the uh, the bank, you know, like a place for dividing it off so that people could see plants and such like that.
So that location would not be allowed, he's within twenty-five feet of an entrance to a parking lot.
Ah.
And if I were to receive a complaint, he would have to move. Um, he also tends to have many of his goods spread out, and here, there, it's very specific that, um, if you're gonna be a vendor, a stationary vendor in one place, you're allowed to have a cart that's four feet long by three feet wide by four feet tall. So you really have to have a more compact design in order to be on our sidewalks. You can't, so he is, he would be in violation of this code.
So a lot of times it's in the parking lot area, so not on the sidewalk cause that?
So on the parking lot area, he could work with Wells Fargo and ask for an uh, for Wells Fargo to apply for an outdoor sales permit. The, or he could actually, he couldn't do that with Wells Fargo, 'cause they don't sell those goods inside. So he'd really have to find a flower location that would allow him to sell in their part, have a parking lot sale, or have an outdoor display of goods that's in relation to, like, Whole Foods, they sell flowers. If he was gonna sell their flowers outside, he could do it, but really, the use is illegal within a parking lot.
Okay, so he's gonna have to work on a few things.
He is.
Okay, um, packet page eighty-eight, you're talking about the vendor, sidewalk vendor needs um, insurance. Um, how do we determine that, do we have a way to determine?
Wha- what section of code?
Can you, yeah, what section of code?
I mean, um, okay, um, what section is this? Page eighty-eight, section twelve, sixty-four, zero-four-zero, and it's number seven. The sidewalk vendor currently applied for a Capitola business license. And, oh, excuse me, number eight, excuse me, uh, the sidewalk vendor has adequate insurance to protect the city from liability. And I was just wondering how we determine that, it, it's a rather small thing. Or is there some general policy we have for insurance? Or do we detail, um, like the size of the vendor, I mean, is there anything there in this?
So in general, when somebody, when we give an encroachment permit, for example, to a contractor who's gonna be doing work in our public right-of-way, that gives them the right to work in the public right-of-way, we will require that they name the city as an additional insured, and they have evidence of that insurance. So for this kind of use, I don't think we've landed on exactly how much insurance someone would need to have. The fact that they're doing business in the public right-of-way, I think it probably depends to some degree on what level of risk they would pose to the city. Um, if they have a big cart that has flames on it, it might be different than if someone's coming in for a sidewalk vending permit, say, to just sell flowers. So we, that's gonna be sort of a procedural element of this, that'll be implemented at staff level. Um, but we haven't figured out exactly what the appropriate insurance limits would be. Frankly, we would use other cities, I think what they're doing is a bit of a guide.
'Cause I'd like to see that come back, I don't want insurance to be so onerous that uh, it basically prohibits.
That's not the intent of this section. The intent of this section is just to make sure that the city's not left holding the dime, um, if there is some, so it would really need to be proportional to the level of risk that the city was subjected to.
Okay, assuming this gets approved, I'd, I'd like to see the actual wording and how we're gonna deal with that.
You'd like that to come back?
Yeah.
So, we, not for approval, I just wanna see it, and then if we have some issue with it, that's different.
So, um, can I just try to restate it a little? So, it would really depend on, we were hoping to keep it more loose, so that when a different, depending on the operator and what they're, what types of services they're providing, um, then, like, the, the risk of the flower salesperson isn't as high as the person selling sausages and onions, that somebody could walk by and get their elbow burned or something. So really, the, the intent here was not to tighten it down and to have prescriptive, um.
The, the other thing to keep in, to keep in mind is that the liability landscape changes pretty dramatically over time. Um, as you may know, recently, there's been a lot of cases against cities involving police departments and police liability cases. The costs associated with them have gone up maybe three times in the last five years. Um, in addition, there's been a lot of crosswalk claims recently with cities and, and accidents that have occurred within crosswalks and pedestrians. And so, I, I, it's not a static thing, this is something that we adjust over time, um, based on sort of the way the state of the insurance market, the state of sort of the risk associated with different times. So I don't know that I could come up with sort of a satisfactory response on here's how much it would be, because it would evolve over time, and it would, as, as um, Community Development Director suggested, vary based on the, the proposed use.
Okay, I, you know, the sidewalk vendor is really not a major commercial entity, and their profit or whatever they're gonna make out of it is probably quite small. And to have such a burden on them that would make it so they wouldn't even do it, I think is against, like you said, the, the intent here. So I totally understand what you mean about protecting the city, but I'd like at some point to come back, maybe the agenda item, to give us an idea of what you're actually talking about when you're putting um, some content behind this particular provision.
Okay.
That's my only question.
I, I have a question.
Oh, you bet.
Kitty, you uh, mentioned that enforcement requires a phone call.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, is that just gonna be the normal process in dealing with somebody that may not be following the rules? Is that what it usually takes?
So if it were a l- life safety issue, we wouldn't need that phone call to come in. We could, if, if I heard that there was something going on that was really uh, jeopardizing the life safety of our pedestrians, we could immediately act on something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but typically, the process is that a code enforcement, um, a, a, so, a member of the public would have to actually fill out a form, so it's not just a phone call, it's a form. And once the form is filled out, it starts our uh, code enforcement procedures. And it's just our way of documenting that the uh, code enforcement complaint has come in, and then we'll take it through all the necessary steps to, to either uh, find out that there isn't an issue there, and if there is, that we resolve it in a timely manner, um.
And does it require a constituent to know the code that the person might be breaking?
No, they don't, no, they can simply call us and say, I have a concern, and we would say, could you please fill? We could walk them through it and actually let them know if there is a section of code that um, is valid.
Mm-hmm.
But they don't need to know what section of code that is when they fi- fi- fill out the code enforcement complaint. We, um, and also, we never share personal information of whoever submitted a code enforcement complaint.
And that document's available on the website?
It's available on our website, and you're welcome, anyone from the uh, public is welcome to come into our front counter and get a document as well.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions from the audience? Seeing none, bring it back for discussion and a motion. And if there's a motion, we have two issues to address, the legal entity thing that Sam brought up, and I think Kitty, you captured this, and Ed brought up, uh, I guess further definition on roaming, how.
No, she clarified it.
She, she just clarified, okay, so basically what Sam brought up was the only addition.
I move approval with the uh, changes.
Oh, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry. If, if we could have just a second to um, draft the changes, and then we'll read those into the record, so you can make your motion with the changes. Oh, sure.
Take a second.
Okay, thank you very much. Fly drafting. News board.
Yeah, the, the one note I had was perhaps just substituting um, entity for individual, excuse me.
Legal entity, yeah, or something like that.
In the section that um, Councilmember Story had, had pointed out.
Okay, I'm gonna define it. Okay, yeah, okay. So do you wanna read it in? Okay. So define what section it is.
Yeah, so within section twelve point six-four oh-three-oh B, no more than one sidewalk vending permit shall be issued to an individual sidewalk vendor, comma, legal entity, comma, or business.
So Sam, you're good with this?
Yeah.
Okay, great, so motion has been made, we need a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So it passes. Item D, consider amended fee schedule, fee schedule for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, this last item before you this evening is an amendment to the fiscal year nineteen twenty, uh, fee schedule. So by way of background, um, each year we review the fee schedule as part of the budget process, and the fee schedule that we currently have in place was adopted by the council on April twenty-fifth of this year. Since that time, we've had a couple of new programs come up and found a couple of areas that need to be corrected. Uh, those include copy fees, tobacco retail license, after-school program, late pickup fee, Jade Street Community Center deposits, sidewalk vending that we just discussed, and developer deposits. So for miscellaneous fees, the copy fees, um, we, the first five pages are free, and we typically charge twenty-five cents per page thereafter. This fee was inadvertently left off the fee schedule for this year, so we're requesting to put that back in there. It's the same uh, fee amount as was in the previous year. Uh, for the police department, we have the tobacco retail license fee, this is a new fee, and it's set at two-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars. And we came to that amount by uh, taking one hour of a police sergeant time and half hour of an administrative records analyst's time. For recreation, we have a couple of fees here, the first is the after-school program late pickup fee. Uh, we're requesting to set that at one dollar per minute. Uh, that's to offset staff times for staying late for, to stay with the kids if they're getting picked up late. And it's pretty consistent with other after-school programs and similar type programs uh, in the, in the area. We've also requesting to add a, a new fee, event vendor fee of a hundred dollars per event to help offset costs of getting the facility ready for, for these events. Um, a lost key fee, this is also new, twenty-five dollars, and it's just to recover the costs of sending someone down to get a new key made. And then the last one for recreation is to uh, establish deposits for renting the community center. And the deposits range from one hundred to five hundred, depending on how big of a group is gonna be using the facility. As far as planning, we have sidewalk vendor fee, which was just discussed. So uh, we're gonna, if the ordinance goes through, we're gonna have a sidewalk vendor permit of a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. And we're also gonna have an annual refuse fee to uh, help cover the cost of trash generated by sidewalk vendors as we go around, have to do extra trash pickup. Um, we're also requesting to increase the developer agreement from five thousand to ten thousand dollars, and add in a new fee for developer agreement annual review of twenty-five hundred dollars, and a historic end-kind replacement of five hundred dollars for getting that permit. And then finally, the um, environmental impact review or E I R. processing is cost plus twenty-one percent. So when we did the fee schedule, like, I wanna say five years ago, all of these types of fees that have like a, um, management of a contract, we raised the, we had increased from seventeen percent, cost plus seventeen, to twenty-one, and somehow this one got missed, and we just happened to catch it this year. So we thought when we were doing cleanup, we would clean up this one as well. Um, so the recommendation is to conduct the public hearing that we've noticed for this evening, adopt the proposed resolution, repealing resolution forty-one forty-eight, and adopt the amended fee schedule. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Um, I have a question about the recreation fees.
Mm-hmm.
So we had received some correspondence about, um, if our recreation fees would at any point uh, include a discount for individuals uh, with disabilities, or individuals who are low income. And I see we have the senior discount, and so I'm wondering, is now a time to consider that? Or would that be during budget hearings to create a scholarship, much like we have a scholarship for our teen club or our after-school club? Uh, what would be the best practice for that?
So, we're also working on a overall fee schedule for the entire fee schedule, kind of a redo of what Matrix had done before. We're just doing it in-house, and that will come back to the council in probably April, when we normally do the fee schedule. And Nikki and I have talked a little bit about addressing that, whether it's through a um, a discount, or probably more energy has opinions on it, probably. a, um, a discount or probably more, Nikki has opinions on it probably much more than I do, but, or a scholarship program. But we've talked about addressing that when we go through this fee schedule update.
Okay, so adopting, uh, these fees now does not, um, prevent us from later creating new discounts or scholarships for these fees?
No, not at all.
Thank you.
I have a question. So was it the fifty cents or whatever it is an hour for charging? I mean, we have a charging station in the Nobyle parking lot, it's not all private, so I'm just wondering about what that means. Electric vehicles, yeah.
That's for the...
What?
That's for the ones up in the upper lot.
Okay. And they pay extra for the actual current day draw? That's a...
That's correct.
That is correct, okay, got it. So, um, when Nikki did her food truck thing in Monterey Park, I mean, there's no fee for the food trucks that come in, that's our own activity? So we don't charge a special fee for that?
Correct, for that event, we did not.
Okay.
But that's something that kinda came up as we were going through that, is that we should probably have an event vendor fee.
Oh, so if we, if we do the event, we would charge them? I mean, it seems to me, I think it was great we didn't charge them.
Uh, I'm gonna defer on that.
So, yes, we would. I think that this is more standard practice for what jurisdictions do because the question comes down to, um, the city's putting on an event and the options are either people come to us and get a permit to operate their food truck there. Alternatively, we're hiring them as contractors to come to our event, which implies a lot of things that get very difficult to resolve. Insurance for one, the selection process, revenue sharing, all of those things come, become issues. So Nikki did a fair amount of research into this and this is what she's recommending is the mechanism. And I think it makes the most sense, basically, where we say, you can come get a permit from us to operate during these events and here's what it costs.
Okay, so they're covering costs, it's a little cleaner arrangement.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if you have anything to add, Nikki, but that was, that was the stickiness that we ran into with this issue the first time.
Okay, thank you, Nikki.
Um, just a matter of councilmembers, so, um, for, just like Jamie explained, um, and then the only thing that I would have to add to that is, um, that we chose to go with single dollar amount instead of a percentage, um, just so that, you know, instead of a percentage of sales, which a lot of other cities do, they're... That the collection side of the way was easier so that you just do the fee to participate in the event and they can know how much loss they're taking to participate and be part of the event that we put on.
Okay, um, related question, uh, we have a lot of control in Monterey Park 'cause we own that land. Suppose you wanna do a pop-up event at Jade Street Park? Is there any issue there because it's not actually owned by the city?
Well, we would have to go with, uh, what the school district requires of that space. So for example, we couldn't do the alcohol sales in that space. But working with the school district, we could basically do a food truck type event or other kind of events there.
Okay, thanks. Very successful, I'm looking forward to the next one.
So, any questions from people in the audience? Seeing none, back to City Council for a comment and motion?
Motion to adopt staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, been motioned and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item ten, adjournment, thank you very much.